We're opening the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting dated May 15, 2017. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Marks?
Here.
Commissioner Uring?
Here.
Vice Chair Pearson? Chair Mazza?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, I missed... Ed Niles, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda with moving items 3A, 5B, and 5C continued to June 5.
I'll second.
Yeah, so item 5B, the applicant is requesting to continue that, so that's, that's good.
I'll second that one also.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, may we have a report on posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on May 5, 2017, with the amended agenda properly posted on May 11, 2017.
Thank you. Okay, now we are going to elect a new chair and vice chair, so the nominations are now open for chair.
I nominate Mike Pearson.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Does anybody else want to make a nomination? Okay, do we need a roll call on that? Oh, yes, close the nomination. Do we have a roll call?
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Uring?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we are taking nominations for the vice chair.
I'll nominate Chris Marks.
And I'll second. Are there any other nominations? Okay, we'll close the nominations. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Uring?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I'm now passing the gavel to Acting Chair Marks, and off we go.
Okay, so just calling now for any written or oral communication from the public on items not on the agenda.
There are none.
Okay, there are none. So on the consent calendar, any items that the commissioners...
No.
Oh, sorry? Yes, for planning commissioner comments. Any comments from the planning commissioners?
None.
Bonnie?
Okay, if Alex can put up my slides. So the first thing I wanted to mention to everybody is to invite the community to attend our Dark Sky Tour and Dark Sky Workshop next month on June 6 and June 7. What, as you all probably know, the city is working on an ordinance to regulate outdoor lighting, and in order to inform the decision makers and the community about differences between good lighting, bad lighting, and the kind of lighting that the community would like to see, we have organized a tour that will be led by our lighting consultant and a lighting engineer. That'll be on, I believe it's a Tuesday, June 6. We will meet here at City Hall at 8:00 PM. The reason for the late hour is because, as you know, the days are pretty long in June, so we're kind of fighting against that. So we'll meet here, and our consultants will give us a little orientation on the kind of lighting that we're going to be looking at, the sites we'll be visiting, and just kind of how everything will work. This will be a meeting that includes the Planning Commission and the City Council. So then after the little orientation part, we'll begin the tour, meet at the first site at 9:45 when it is scheduled to actually be dark. So we'll probably visit three, maybe four sites, so it's not, we're not going to be running all over town. We will visit the site, the consultants will provide some comments on that. There won't be question and answer at each site because since this is an open public meeting, we'll need to reserve that until we get back here to City Hall the next night for the workshop where we can do, have minutes and a more regular public workshop, public hearing type of thing. So that's what will happen on the following night. Here at City Hall at 6:30, we'll have the consultants lead an overview of the sites that we saw, brief everybody on the results of surveys that we're going to be distributing surveys to all the participants of the lighting tour so that you can make comments on things that you saw and liked and didn't like and things like that. So we'll go over that, and then also go through our draft ordinance so everybody can understand what we have in mind, and you can provide feedback. So that is scheduled for June 6 and June 7, so I hope you will all participate. Our website, malibu-city.org/darksky, is where you can find resources and information about this, and we'll have the draft ordinance posted there along with the itinerary so people will know where we're going and that sort of thing. And now the next slide. There we go. I want to make sure the community is aware that Caltrans is proposing to replace the bridge over Trancas Creek. This is a fairly big deal of a project. There is a draft initial study and environmental assessment, EIR, document that Caltrans has published. The community or the public has until June 5 to make comments to Caltrans on this document. The website is posted here on this slide, and we're in the process of creating a webpage on our city website so that we can provide this information and resources for you. Eventually, Caltrans will be applying to the city for a coastal development permit for this project. That hasn't, the application hasn't come in yet, but just kind of in preparation for that, we're going to set up a website so you'll have easy access to it. And there's also next week, on next Thursday, going to be a public meeting on May 25 from 6 to 8 at the Malibu West Beach Club. So that is a public meeting for the community to come and provide comments on the project and the environmental document that is out for circulation right now, so I encourage everybody to attend that meeting. And then my last comment, I don't have a slide for, but I wanted to let everybody know that the City Council Subcommittee called ZERACIS, the Zoning Ordinance Revision and Code Enforcement Subcommittee, is going to be meeting next Tuesday to talk about short-term rentals and the new ordinance that the City Council has asked the staff to work on. So that meeting will be next Tuesday here at City Hall starting at 10:00 AM. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Question? On these meetings on the 6th and 7th, it's my understanding that the meeting on the 6th, because it's not agendized, we can't talk to each other, and nobody can ask questions.
It's, it, there, it will be agendized, we'll have, we're going to post an agenda and information about each site that we're going to visit so that anybody in the public that wants to participate in that will be able to do so. Because it's, it is a Brown Act meeting, we can't have a lot of discussion amongst commissioners and the public and everything, public input during the actual tour because we won't be able to record that and provide minutes. So basically, the consultants will be providing information, but we won't be providing public feedback and stuff like that at that time. That'll happen the next night.
And the next night, is that an actual Planning Commission/City Council meeting?
It'll be a joint meeting, yes.
Okay, I will not be there, so if that has to do with quorums.
Okay.
Be on notice.
Okay, are you available for either of them?
The first one I can make, the second one I can't. That's, oh, the bridge itself, are there two bridge projects or one? Because I read in the paper about one that was short and one that was long.
There are two alternatives that Caltrans is considering. One is a shorter span over the creek and one is a longer span, so there's two alternatives.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to hit your mic?
ZERACIS is the 16th or the 23rd? You said Tuesday, and I didn't get which Tuesday.
The next ZERACIS meeting will be May 23, so next Tuesday.
Thank you.
So to clarify, that's for the short-term rentals, May 23, and then, or is that for the Dark Sky?
That's for short-term rentals.
So short-term rentals, May 23. Trancas, when was that meeting?
May 25, Thursday, next week.
And the others, ZERACIS on the Dark Sky?
That's, that'll be the Joint Planning Commission/City Council, and that is June 6 and 7.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Great, okay, so next up, we've got the consent calendar. Would anyone like to pull anything from the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Okay, so John, would you like to pull?
Which one is the one with the eighth year of extension?
Let me check.
Yes, 3B1.
Okay, so John, you'd like to pull 3B1?
3B1 and not 3B2.
Okay, so we'll pull 3B1. Anything else from the consent calendar? Okay. As far as, do we open for public comment like a normal?
Yeah, a staff report.
First of all, let's move the rest of the consent calendar.
Okay.
Move the remainder of the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
One point, we are pushing 3A1, does that matter, or do we call that out or no?
That was already continued, so.
Okay, thank you.
We just need a vote on that one.
So a vote for the consent calendar. Roll call vote, I guess?
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Uring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Could we have the staff report on 3A1, please?
B1.
3B2.
3B2, thank you.
3B1.
Last direction, 3B1.
The applicant for the property, according to conversations with the owner, has informed us that due to the uncertainty with the Broad Beach Rock Revement that they are requesting an extension, the project has been through the city's plan check process. They've processed also a code update because of the age of it, so they have kept current with that. There are some additional documents that need to be recorded, but until the, there's been a finalization of the plans for the Broad Beach Rock Revement, the property owner is not ready to undertake the project and wishes to keep it active.
The project applicant is here, if you'd like to hear from him directly.
Excellent. Do we have any questions of staff?
Richard, this is the fifth request, so it's eight years. Is that correct? Okay, no more questions.
Okay, then I did want to, let's see, so...
You want to open the public hearing?
Yeah, I want to open the public hearing, and I've got two speakers in line. Would the applicant also like to speak? Or is that?
Do we have any disclosures?
Ah, thank you. Any disclosures from the commissioners on this one?
None.
Okay, then for public speakers, I'd like to open the public hearing. Do I gavel that in? Yeah, thank you. Okay, so the applicant, would you like a moment's speech? I assume that's, is that Jamie here? Okay, and then we've also got Mark Magnuson listed as well, and we'll give Jamie 15 minutes as normal? Yeah? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jamie Harnish. I represent the property owner, Mark Majestin, who is here with me tonight. Just a correction for John Mazza. The original permit that was issued was good for two years. Yes, this is the fifth extension, so that would be seven years, not eight years. That makes a difference. But I'm going to let Mark speak on his own behalf as to the reason and rationale for his extension. Also, to remind the commission, this is also a lot merger. Once the properties are merged, it's merged in perpetuity. Public Works will not allow you to unmerge the lots. So Mark, again, is hesitant because of the lot merger and the deed restrictions that are required on this. He's hoping to get more information and more of a resolute from the GAD process before he goes forward, but I'll let him address you on his own behalf.
Yeah, hi. Really, the issues come down to the uncertainty that everyone has on Broad Beach about where this whole initiative is heading, whether it'll be approved, whether it will, what it's going to end up costing. The assessments that have been voted on so far have gone, you know, have increased dramatically. There's a proposal for another dramatic increase, which we don't know whether that will be approved by homeowners or not. It's a, it's a tough situation to make a decision to go forward with a major construction project on that basis, and that's, that's where my reluctance is. I mean, I've been through a, an upgrade to try to stay current with the building code as it changed, I think in 20, to the 2013 code, and I'm just not in a position where I'm comfortable jumping into a construction project like this, that magnitude, with those uncertainties, and that's, that's why we're asking for an extension.
Thank you.
And I would just like, I would just like to conclude by saying we did do a code upgrade for the 2013 Uniform Building Code. We did have plan check approval and all review agency approvals. That expired along the way, so we have submitted for the 2016 Uniform Building Code upgrade, and we're currently going through those agencies to keep the building plans current, plan check approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this topic? Okay, am I going to close the public comment? Okay, go ahead.
Richard, this is the first I've heard that you cannot split a lot once it's been merged. Is that, or maybe I should ask Trevor. If it, if it follows the zoning code, if you have the proper amount of frontage, you can always split a lot, can't you?
It's probably a matter of the process and that it would need to be a sub, go through the subdivision process.
Right.
I'm not aware of a reason why you wouldn't be able to go through a subdivision process to subdivide.
Okay.
If it meets the size.
You can't just wipe it out, you have to go through the process.
Oh, yeah, you have to go, go split it again. And Richard, you, they are saying that they had plan check approval and now they need to get new plan check approval for the new building code, or is that just a minor thing or a major thing?
Jamie may be able to speak to the changes structurally, but as, they've already done this once before, but as the building code changes with energy, it's usually energy efficiency, I believe, and also some seismic issues. As the regulations become stronger on those, they have to re-engineer the house to meet that current standard. If they would have started construction prior to the code update, they could have continued under the old code, but since this construction has not begun, whenever they do start it, it will have to meet the most current building codes, which the big thing now is really energy calculations.
But the way it stands now, they have gone through plan check on everything other than the, the code changes.
That is my understanding from the applicant, yes.
Okay, I just want to, before I make a motion... Okay, I just want to, before I make a motion, I just want to make sure everybody is aware that we are in the process of changing our extension policy, which will happen fairly shortly. I think I asked Bonnie the other day, it's a couple of months off.
Um, yes, we're scheduled for June, I believe, at the city council.
Okay, so, that will be much stricter than it is now. I'd like to make a motion to approve a one-year extension.
I'll second.
So, can we have a roll call vote on this one?
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Uring?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marks?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, now we're on to the new public hearings. Item 5A.
It's been continued.
Item 5A has been continued. Uh, let's see, 5B, oh, no, no, 5A is.
5B is the one that was continued.
Yeah, 5A is, yeah, it's there. So.
5A's still on.
Thank you. So, we're going to now, I'm going to read, read through the description here, so we've got for 5A, it's the coastal permit, development permit number 16-051, an application for the installation of a prefabricated pool and fire pit, and expansion of an existing wooden deck on a beachfront parcel. So, can I get a staff report, please?
Uh, good evening, Acting Chair Marks, members of the Planning Commission, members of the public. This evening, we have the previously described project, that's proposed at 30948 Broad Beach Road. The subject, beachfront property is developed with two-story, single-family residence, rear yard deck, and a detached accessory structure and carport. There's an oblique aerial photo included here, which shows the configuration of the majority of the surrounding developments, which include predominantly large, two-story beachfront houses, many of which have accessory structures in the front and rear portions of the yards. The proposed project would include the construction of rear yard improvements, consisting of a 112-square-foot, partially buried, prefabricated swimming pool, a 66-square-foot expansion of the existing rear yard deck, all landward of the deck string line, approximately 92-square feet of concrete pavers are proposed along the side yard, a 15-square-foot fire pit, approximately nine inches above the finished deck surface is proposed just west of the proposed pool, and approximately 7.4 cubic yards of understructure grating would be required. All improvements are less than the height limits established by the Trancas Beach Overlay Here's a photograph of existing and proposed site plans. Hopefully, you can see on the, the top photo, the top site plan is what exists currently. The portion that shaded bluish-purple is actually the existing single-family residence, and you can see, hopefully, the area outlined in red below, which is the proposed deck structure. As I mentioned, the proposed deck would be located in the rear portion of the lot, well landward of the mean high tide line, and no improvements would occur seaward of the deck string line. The, hopefully, you can see the lighter blue color on the bottom site plan illustrates the location of the rectangular pool that is proposed within the existing deck footprint, approximately in the, I guess, in the, in the far western portion of the deck. And again, as I mentioned before, the proposed pool would not exceed the existing deck finish floor elevation. Here's an expanded site plan that, that illustrates the location of the pool. It also illustrates the structural components of the deck structure and the pool, and also provides cross-sections, particularly in the lower left-hand corner of the, of the screen, you'll see the proposed pool is, would be partially buried, with a small portion extending above the finished grade, and then you can also see, hopefully, the, the cross-section from east to west along the, the center exhibit, showing that the pool is indeed flush with the existing deck structure, and it also shows the proposed foundation work and underpinning proposed as part of the deck and pool. Also of note, the pool equipment is actually incorporated within the existing shell, the fiberglass shell of the pool, so there will be no additional pool equipment located on the property. The proposed project and all the associated improvements have undergone conformance review by the city planning department, the city's coastal engineer, the city biologist, the public works department, environmental health, fire department, and the state lands commission. This review has concluded that the proposed deck is consistent with the applicable beachfront development standards, including setbacks, the deck string line, the Trancas Canyon Beach Overlay height limitations, and the grading limitations. Upon completion of the staff report and distribution of the contents to members of the public and public agencies, we did receive one piece of correspondence from the California Coastal Commission. I have had conversations with our coastal engineer and the coastal commission staff regarding their comments, which essentially requested further explanation of how the proposed project has been designed and conditioned to accommodate maximum wave uprush. And just to go through that issue in a bit more detail, I provided this more zoomed-in oblique air photograph. The area in blue shows the approximate extent of wave uprush, and darker blue beneath it, adjacent to the existing structure, is obviously the proposed pool and deck. It's important to note that the wave uprush study that was prepared for the project considered the potential for wave uprush based on conservative assumptions of sea level rise and a designed beach profile without any shoreline protection whatsoever. Essentially, the conclusions in the report stated that near the pool, and actually within the footprint of the pool, you essentially have just surface inundation, where even under the most conservative assumptions used in the wave uprush study, the proposed pool and associated improvements are located at the extreme landward edge, so the last 10 feet of the wave uprush zone, and thus only minor surface inundation, is expected. Based on these calculations that were completed by the project applicant and reviewed by the city's coastal engineer, the slight inundation that would be experienced has been incorporated into the design of the pool, and the pool actually would hold whatever water would inundate the pool, and the partially buried pool was also designed to sufficiently withstand the anticipated wave forces of up to 29 pounds per linear foot associated with this surface wave uprush. And furthermore, due to the pool's buried foundation design, no hydrostatic uplift would occur as a result of wave uprush. So, to memorialize those additional points, at the request of the coastal commission, staff proposed some updates to resolution number 17-25, which would update finding D5 of the resolution. It's on page four of the resolution, under chapter 10, which is the city's shoreline and bluff development section of LIP, chapter 10. And I'll go ahead and read these proposed changes into the record. The proposed improvements subject to wave uprush, the proposed pool and deck are designed with foundations that are located below the anticipated uprush scour zone based on a designed beach profile without any shoreline protection device in place. The proposed pool's foundation enclosure will be designed to withstand the anticipated 29 pounds per linear foot of wave forces against the seaward side of the enclosure in the worst-case scenario that incorporates 18 inches of sea level rise if any portion of the pool wall or enclosure is constructed above the designed beach profile. However, the reviewed project information indicates the pool and its foundation enclosure will be located entirely below the designed beach profile, and furthermore, due to the proposed pool's buried foundation design, no hydrostatic uplift would occur as a result of wave uprush. Staff feels like, staff along with the city's coastal engineer feels like with the introduction of this additional text into the finding, it addresses the concerns expressed by the coastal commission in their letter dated May 9, 2017, which, again, in summary, called for some additional information being incorporated to ensure consistency with the local implementation plans, chapter 10. So, with those minor changes, and of course, with the approval of conditions that have been incorporated into resolution number 17-25, staff is recommending approval of coastal development permit number 16-051. Staff's available for questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you as well, any questions for staff?
Doesn't matter. Did I hear you right that we're, we're using 18 inches as sea level rise in our wave uprush study, and is that standard for the city, or is that just this particular house?
That's a standard approach for the analysis, at least along this stretch. I will acknowledge that, you know, the amount of sea level rise is, is sort of an ever-evolving standard, if you will, but based on my conversations with the city's coastal engineer, that's standard practice at this point. It could change, but it's a relatively conservative assumption.
Okay, and, uh, as a matter of disclosure, I went to see the property with Steve Uring on, oh, a couple of days ago, and it's not the same house that's in the drawing, or in the, in the, whatever it is, your.
That's correct. Yeah, it's undergone, it's undergone improvements pursuant to an administrative plan review, to the single-family house itself.
Well, it's not even the same location. The house next door is a totally different house, unless they built it in the last couple of months.
The, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
The house to the west, the neighbor to the west is a.
Correct.
Copper-colored.
That's correct.
Metal house, and that's a Spanish one.
That's right.
Is this a really old picture, or is that what's happening?
Yeah, it's, it's the best oblique air photograph I could find, high resolution.
But it is the same house. Now, this is a dumb question. Why, why are we hearing this, and why was it separated from, from the other item that was continued? Seems to me it's, you could walk in and put a shed right there over the counter, why are we discussing a 112-square-foot pool?
Well, based on the proposed, the proposal to introduce the pool in this location, staff concluded that a coastal development permit would be required. Why it was separated originally was, it was envisioned that, that this application would move through the, the application process much faster potentially than the, the proposed improvements to the single-family house. So, that was the applicant's choice to separate the coastal development permits. Again, based on the standards of the LIP, we felt like it necessitated review of this, this proposed pool and deck with a coastal development permit, and it's consistent with the approach taken with the adjacent residents to the east, which also required a coastal development permit for similar improvements.
Thank you.
And then, the other questions I had is, for the coastal commission observations, that language that you arrived at, that's signed up by them as well?
They weren't specific on the precise language that needed to be included, but essentially they indicated they wanted some more technical information regarding the approach taken as part of the wave uprush study to be introduced into the record.
We've had previous comments from the coastal commission on accessory development in particular, and, and new single-family residences on beachfront lots. They typically want to ensure that the, that the, any shoreline protection device that's on the property is not serving to protect anything other than the septic system, so they want to, they want assurance that any other development on the site is going to be able to stand on its own without relying on a shoreline protection device. So, that's, I think that's what they were looking for here.
Thank you for clarifying, and then, I didn't see in the diagrams anywhere that the fire pit's located, is that, did I just miss something, or?
Yeah, it's actually, it is located on the, on the plan set, it's just a very small, and it's actually incorporated on slide five. It's a very small rectangle, just, I guess it would be east of the pool. So, it's, it's located on, on the plan set, I can tell you which one specifically, but it's in there. It's just, it's easy to miss because it is very small.
Do you mind if we bring up that slide just so we can see?
Sure. So, it's a little hard to see here, I'll turn on the laser pointer. It's in this location, right there.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any disclosures for today?
Commissioner Mazza mentioned, he and I visited the site last week. Didn't learn anything that wasn't in the staff report.
I already disclosed, but the same.
Great, then I'll go ahead and open.
Well, I have one question, staff. Bonnie, Josh mentioned that 18, 18 inches rise was good for this area. Does the ocean rise equally everywhere? If I, if I have a hearing come in that's east Malibu, and they say it's four inches or it's six feet, how do I judge that?
I think the, I think the city coastal engineer is using 18 inches around the city, but they're also looking at formalizing, they're, they're reviewing sea level rise as, and whether that needs to be changed or not. There's always new guidance coming out, but that is the current guidance.
And is the coastal commission going to issue something for the whole state, or for different areas on sea level rise?
Um, they've issued some guidance already. I'm not sure if there's additional guidance that's expected to come out or not, but there, there is a, a regional study that's been underway for the Los Angeles County coastal areas, and the city's been following that and participating in that, so.
But that's not out yet.
Um, there are some, some preliminary results out for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff before opening public comment? Okay, and open public comment. Uh, let's see, so, would the applicant like to speak? I've got two other speakers listed, Darren.
No, those are them.
Oh, okay, I've got Darren and Janelle, so, and would you need 15 minutes? Who's the applicant?
Um, I just need a moment. I just wanted to be available in case any additional questions were needing to be asked.
Very good.
Janelle is with Dave Weiss's office, and she can probably answer John's question about wave uprush.
Thank you.
Hi. Please, ask whatever you need to ask.
My question is, we get applications all the time. He happened, Josh said you're using 18 inches. I'm wondering what everybody else in town uses, and is there a standard?
There's, there's no real standard, but most of us will use 18 inches, and that's an anticipation of the 100-year study that they, they give us. It's in the guidelines, as Bonnie was saying. You know, the guideline has a minimum and a maximum, where the maximum is at the end of 2100, 6.6 feet. The low is, I believe, I want to say it's nine inches. And so, currently, at 2016, in the projections that they've given us from 2000 to 2100, we are currently underperforming. So, the additions that we use, you know, we base it on a timeline of, let's say, what somebody's mortgage is going to be, you know, so 30 years out, two, 18 inches, two feet, depending on how conservative we want to be, is typically what we use.
And you project out, you say 30 years?
Yeah, about 30 years.
Okay, and is, Bonnie, is that our, is that what is required, 30 years or 100 years?
The, the LCP talks about a 100-year economic life of a structure, and that's what the city coastal engineer is looking for.
It, that's for the brand-new homes, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, these are, you know, if we're, if we're doing something that's a remodel or a addition or some, it's not, we'll use, they don't, the guidelines say you have a maximum and minimum, use your judgment. That's basically what the guidelines say.
Okay, so what is, if we had a new house, what is the minimum for 100 years?
We, we would use, we would use 24 inches.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's typically what we use.
And just another clarification on that, for the illustration that showed the, the wave uprush.
Yes.
Is that at the 100 years and the?
So, what, when we, when I do a coastal engineering analysis, the, that's based on a 100-year storm, maximum condition, all the conditions being perfect for that storm to, to hit. And we do it, or I do it with a, without the rock revetment in, in mind, so everything is an unimpeded, impermeable slope. So, that, that's ultra-conservative, and where the, where the pool is located on this particular property, you're actually, the designed beach profile, you know, you're getting literally this much of the wave hitting that wall, and as, where it ends is, the velocity of the wave is zero. So, essentially, you're in the, you're in the foam, you know, so.
Thank you, okay. Any other questions of applicant? Okay, anyone else for a public comment before we close public comment? Okay, public comment closed, so, another discussion?
To make approval, a motion to approve with the language added by staff?
Great, we have a second, so, a quick roll call vote?
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings? Vice Chair Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, next item up is we're continuing five B to next session, so we're now on item five C, coastal development permit.
That one, five C is also continued, so.
There you go. Thank you again.
We're down to five D.
All right, on to five D. Coastal development permit amendment number one seven dash zero zero two, an application to amend coastal development permit number one four dash zero eight three to revise the approved interior and exterior model, modify the roof line and add seventy-two square feet to an existing multifamily residence. Can I get a staff report?
Yes, thank you, members of the commission. Next item on the agenda is coastal development permit amendment for two-five-three-five-oh Malibu Road. The property is located on the south side of Malibu Road and consists of an existing four-unit apartment complex constructed in nineteen fifty-nine. On May second, two thousand sixteen, the property was approved for an interior and exterior remodel, additions to the first and second floor, new rooftop deck, new septic, and after-the-fact approval of understructure storage areas. The approval also included a tentative parcel map to convert the apartments into condominiums, a conditional use permit to approve the multifamily use, and an offer to dedicate a lateral access easement across the property. Since the approval of CDP number fourteen eighty-three, a new owner has purchased the property and wishes to amend the scope of work to include interior and exterior remodel, fifty-eight square foot enclosure of an existing stairway, fourteen square foot addition to the second floor, removal of interior garage partition walls, revised rooftop deck layout, and a modified roof line lowering the height of the structure from twenty-six feet five inches on the seaward side to twenty-two feet nine inches with a forty-two-inch glass railing around the perimeter. The project will remain a less than fifty percent remodel. The proposed additions are highlighted on the site plan review and as shown, all proposed development will be landward of the existing seawall and over the existing concrete development pad. The most notable changes from the previously approved CDP include the exterior facade of the structure and alteration of the roof line. The existing structure has a pitched roof measuring twenty-five feet seven inches on the landward side. The amended height will be twenty-eight feet with a pitched roof. On the seaward side, the existing height measures twenty-six feet five inches and will be lowered to twenty-two feet nine inches with the forty-two-inch glass railing. And this slide shows the massing of the structure being shifted from the seaward side to the landward side. Lowering of the roof line on the seaward side may potentially open up views from the adjacent neighbors. There was a typo on the staff report that was referenced in email by staff on May eighth. The allowable side yard setback in table three of the zoning conformance section should read thirteen feet four inches instead of thirteen feet seven inches. And as stated in the email, the proposed development meets the side yard setback requirements. Staff recommends the planning commission adopt resolution seventeen two zero, approving the project as condition. And this concludes my presentation and the applicant and staff are available for questions.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and do disclosures first this time. Any disclosures?
None.
I drove by.
Easy enough. Then any questions of staff? That's easy too. Okay, let's see, so I'd like to open the public hearing. So I don't have any documents on this one. Would anyone like to speak on this item? The applicant?
I'm available to answer questions on the applicant.
Oh, sorry.
That's all you need to do is hold on to that and close the.
Oh. We'll close the public hearing on this item and opening up commissioner discussion.
You're going to move the item? I'll move the item with the language adjusted or is that just a FYI?
It's just an FYI.
Okay, I'll move the item as, as presented.
Second.
All right, a quick roll call vote?
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item up is item five E, coastal development permit number one six dash zero one nine and variance number one six dash zero two one, an application for the construction of a new vertical public beach accessway, including a variance for construction on slopes. So can I get a staff report, please?
Good evening, commissioners. The item you see before you this evening, you heard once before, it was on the December fifth meeting agenda. The reason why we are back before the commission again this evening is that after the appeal period, both the local appeal period and the coastal commission appeal period had ended, it was brought up to staff's attention that there was an error in the notices that were provided to the city. The city went through and we looked at those notices and did find that the majority of occupant labels had an issue with their address. And it would be fair to say that the occupants in the area did not receive notice. And so as a result, what we're here to do this evening is have you reconsider the item. And as part of the motion, we will be repealing the previously issued resolution because of the inaccuracy in the noticing. This is a aerial map and vicinity photo. What we're here to show you is that this is a vacant lot in between multifamily development towards the east end of town. The lot is currently open to the public. There is a, about a four-foot-high chain link fence with a gate at, at the end and that provides access via wooden staircase and some platforms on both ends that led, lead you down to the beach. There is also a culvert there that Caltrans maintains. And this piece of property is actually part of the Pacific Coast Highway right-of-way and there was a transfer from Caltrans to the California Department of State Parks with the intention of developing this into a public beach access that is something that meets current standards in terms of safety going down the staircase. Once again, the project provo, provides for the removal of the existing onsite development. The fence that's there and gates will be replaced, as you may recall from the previous meeting. We would like to add a condition to the project that it include a visually permeable fence at a six-feet-high with a six-foot-high locking gate. The reason for this is that the applicant had proposed a lower fence as they had done on one of their other Malibu Road beach accesses. And we brought that back before, we worked with the applicant and brought that back before the planning commission for an amendment because of the neighbors in the area. It's more common to see beach accesses feature a six-foot-high fence and gate that locks. The only access point that is different from this would be the one that Caltrans recently completed work on at the very east end of town, almost before Topanga. That particular beach access doesn't have a gate on it at all, but it's also a different type of access. It's an area that really isn't around multifamily or single-family development and the beach characteristics are a bit different. There also would be a requirement for trash receptacles so that there is some place for folks to deposit their trash when visiting the beach. And there's also a proposal for landscaping as part of this. And the variance that's before you this evening is because there is a steep slope between the sandy beach below and the highway and there's no way to feasibly construct a staircase without putting some sort of footing into that slope that is abutting Pacific Coast Highway. And in the case of this project, it's a pile-supported staircase. One major difference from the project that you saw before you in December is that the staircase has been relocated to the eastern portion of the property. That would be the portion of the property that would be on the right-hand side of this photograph. And the reason for that design change is it's something that the applicant and a concerned party worked out together. And as part of this, when we renoticed the project, we received new plans that showed that staircase. Our staff looked at the staircase again just to see if the change in location had changed any of the determinations that were made when this was previously reviewed, and it does not. The, the coastal characteristics of the site and the geotechnical characteristics of the site and drainage all remain the same regardless of stair location. This is an updated site plan. As you can see in this site plan, near the circle there, that it is at the eastern portion of the site, you see the staircase. Once again, that staircase was more towards the middle of the property. Staff recommends adoption of the resolution which approves the coastal development permit. As mentioned in the staff report, there's been some correspondence lately between the project applicant and the concerned neighbor. This is the same neighbor that brought the information regarding the public notice to staff's attention. The applicant has worked to address a number of the concerns that were raised in the first piece of correspondence that we distributed, I believe, on Thursday if I'm not mistaken. But the distribution that you received this afternoon shows all of the back-and-forth discussions to the, the latest email that staff received regarding the MRCA's answers to the questions that were posed by the neighbor. Staff's available for any questions and the applicant is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any disclosures from the commissioners?
None.
I drove by.
Consistent. Great. Any questions of staff?
Richard, you know, the picture you had up, it showed the, there was a stairway on the east side of the property. Is that where the new stairway is going to be? Looks like, it looks like a stairway from here, right?
Yes, it is a stairway. It's right up against the neighboring property there and there's a little gate. This stair will be probably ten to fifteen feet to the west of that.
Okay, so it's going to move over into the middle there, okay.
I would say approximately, can you see, towards the top of the photo, there's a white car with its door open and there's a little platform?
Gotcha.
Would be in that area there.
And then from this angle, it kind of hooks to our left from, as you go down, you walk to the right along the beach?
Yes, that is correct. It would hook around towards those yellow kayaks.
Gotcha.
Got it. Mazza, Chair, push your mic.
Richard, one of the correspondents mentioned signage. Is there any requirement for signage? No smoking, no dogs, no this, no that in the resolution?
Currently, we do ask for safety signage that could be included. It is typical though that the applicant can speak to this, but I believe that their standard signage that they put up at the Malibu Road location does address the beach rules and smoking and animals and then waste.
Okay, and then the second question is, in this picture, there's no rock revetment in front of this property, but there is on both the other two, the, either side. So has, does this beach get scoured? It looks like it would be sucked out to sea, but I don't know if you would know that.
When I visited the property, there was more sand there, so I don't know the extent of it. That's something that I'd have to ask the city coastal engineer, is he did look at that, I know. But I do believe that there is a good amount of sand movement because as I mentioned, when I visited the property, the first time where those folks are standing, there were not as many rocks and I was standing more on sand than rock.
Okay, thank you.
Richard, just one more que, and, and I may be entirely wrong about this, but I remember when they were talking about the Malibu Road beach access, there was some discussion about putting up signage that talked about, I don't, I thought tides and making sure people who weren't familiar with what was going on there would not be surprised. And I don't know if that, if that in fact happened or if I was only listening with one ear and, but I remember, I just remember, so there was some discussion that said, geez, you know, there's going to be people there who aren't familiar with what the ocean's doing and maybe some notice to them would be beneficial. If, if that didn't happen, ignore this.
You are correct. That was, I believe, council member Rosenthal requested that there be public safety signage. And the applicant can speak to this as well, but MRCA, I believe, maintains a website with tides and various coastal information. And the sign that I viewed when I went out to the Malibu Road site made, there was a notice about coastal hazards and directed people to the MRCA website for current beach conditions. And what we did on this one is contained in the resolution, we asked for on thirty-eight and thirty-nine, conditions thirty-eight, thirty-nine. Thirty-eight requests the installation, requires the installation of signs when the water quality is unsafe. So there's public signage if the beach needs to be closed because of that. And thirty-nine relates to the requirement of signage, which does follow in what council member Rosenthal requested, which is the installation of warning signs describing hazards related to tides and tide tables.
Thank you very much.
If there's no other questions, we'll gabble in the open hearing. A little louder, sorry. Let's see, so first off, we've got Jessica can speak as the applicant, Jessica Nguyen. We also have Randall Schoenberg and Mary Lou Miller to speak as well. Yes, and Jessica, you have your fifteen minutes.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jessica Nguyen and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority, which is the applicant for this project. I would just like to emphasize some points that have already been repeated in the staff report and within the correspondence that we have had with the neighbor, Mr. Schoenberg. So the proposed project intends to improve access at the site, which currently consists of an existing unpermitted stairway that is not compliant with the California Building Code, which is the stairway that Commissioner Euring was pointing to on the east end. And this existing stairway does not have consistent rise and run, does not have adequate landing, and does not have proper handrails. The proposed project consists of a new five-foot-wide stairway that will be compliant with the building code and will provide safer and more secure access. The proposed stairway is only slightly wider than the existing stairway. Additionally, the proposed project will also provide a new view outlook area on the bluff in the western portion of the site and an approximately five-foot-wide pathway along the frontage of the property. City planning staff has recommended a six-foot-high fence along the frontage of the property. However, the MRCA, Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority, would prefer to have a four-foot-high fence along the frontage of the property to minimize impacts to scenic views and would appreciate if the commission would consider reducing the fence height requirement to four feet high. Also additionally, I would like to emphasize that the new proposed stairway is, again, only five feet wide, which is slightly wider than the existing stairway. And the new stairway is co-compliant and will provide safer access than the existing stairway. And the lateral portion of the new proposed stairway, which will be placed on the beach, only takes up about one percent to two-point-five percent of the beach space that is available for public use. And the lateral portion of the new proposed stairway is also going to be about five-foot wide and about fifteen to eighteen feet long on the beach. However, the stairs, the, the way the stairs are designed is that some steps will be covered during the high sand elevations, which means that the stairways may not always be fifteen to eighteen feet stretched along the portion of the beach. And I'm available here for any questions that you might have, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Next up, Randall? And then after that, Mary Lou.
I think I had some pictures. If you want to see some, some other pictures, there's a PowerPoint that I set up. Hi, thank you very much for letting me speak on this.
And Randall, remember, you have three minutes, just so you're aware.
Three, yes. Ms. Nguyen and Mr. Malik have been very nice, but I still have some issues as the, I'm not sure if the PowerPoint's going up. The first is that there's already public access, so we're not talking about creating new vertical access. And that, I think, is a real problem because this, why are they doing this project? There was $400,000 that was taken from Larry Ellison project and was supposed to provide for new public access, and this is not new public access. There's already existing open gate and stairs. This is from today and there are two groups of people on there from the public, not residents. So I would like all of it corrected to say this is not new public access, but just remodeling basically our beach, which really doesn't need it. So it's not going to improve access by the public. The staircase is still in the wrong place. I'll send you, flip through so you can see. This is the exi, whoops, the existing stairway. It was built by locals to provide access to the beach a number of years ago before we came in around ten years. we came in, around 10 years ago. It's, it's been there for a long time. It's, it provides perfect access to the beach, but, whoops, here is where they're going to have that stairway that's gonna be five feet wide and then turn to the right. And it's basically going to take up the third or fourth best place to sit on the beach. This is a tiny beach. You cannot walk up or down the coast from it unless there's a zero tide. So this is a tiny, tiny beach, it's 100, it's like this room. It's about 150 feet wide. And one of the nice things is, is that we have this sort of hidden beach, and we have this, we have a hidden staircase over on the side that you can't see, right? This is, you asked whether the sand goes out, the answer is yes. Several times a year, the sand washes out and washes in. The tide ordinarily hits the top and cleans off the sand, which is, which makes it very nice. But we have this beach where ordinarily, it looks very rustic and, and natural, because the stairs are off the side. Imagine if the stairs are to the, on the left portion of this picture, that's where they're putting the new stairs, right? On that little, what's left of the beach when the, the sand goes out. There's my dad, who's gonna be 80 next week on the stairs, not having a problem with the existing stairs. Here's the current access point. Could be improved on the top. Here's what it looks like. Again, my father going down, this is a few months ago. It's just not a problem, the way it is now. And I, I think the goal of this project, basically, is to spend that $400,000 and make it look like the MRCA is doing something. This is the little park, and my objection here is that they're gonna cut us off. We have a little stairs that go into this area, and they're gonna put a fence and block us off. We're the only people that will ever use this. No one else from the public is gonna stop and sit on a bench and look at the beach. I have issues with the signs, which I hope will be resolved. I have one other issue I wanna raise, two more issues I wanna raise. One is that the, the fence needs to be removable, a section of it, because we need to have access there to repair the seawall, which gets done periodically by the neighbors. Moon Shadows used it also. And the last is, they're using my mailing address. I tied two lots together, 20516 and 20518. Inexplicably, the registrar took away 20516, and now they've given it to this, so everybody who looks for this beach is gonna come to our front door, and I'd really like them to pick another number.
Got it.
Okay, so those, those are my issues, and I hope you can help me resolve them. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well. Next up is Mary Lou. Mary Lou Miller?
Yes.
And again, you have three minutes.
I don't have any pictures. I live just on the other side of where that stairway is right now. The problem with this public access beach, I'm, it's nice that you're gonna put up a fence, it's wonderful you're gonna do, I don't know what's wrong with a stairway that's already there. The beach is half the time rocks, sometimes sand. It's a storm drain. It's, anyway, the people that are on the, that find this, access to this beach on the apps on your smartphone are young kids. They come down there, they drink beer, they throw frisbees, they have dogs, not on leashes, they leave their trash, there's no, Malibu doesn't have a trash pickup or a dipsti dumpster or something. So these kids that are drinking and carousing, also, there's no porta potty. So what they do when they have to defecate or pee, they go up under our houses. I mean, I'm sure under Randy's house, and they'd go under my house. It's really nasty. So whatever you're gonna do with this, this wonderful fence and gate and stairway, it's sort of silly. I know you can't do anything about the app that says it's public access, but to spend all that kind of money, whatever your is, you're, you're planning to spend, is sort of ludicrous. It would be nice to have a beach cleanup or a porta potty and signs that say no alcohol, dogs on leashes. Thank you. I don't know if that helps, but...
Thank you, Mary Lou, it does. So any other public comment from those who hadn't submitted sheets? Okay, and we're gonna close the public hearing?
Oh.
Ah, no, I'm sorry, I was looking left. Thank you, Norman, you'll have three minutes as well.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Through the chair, my name's Norm Haney, I'm at 22741 Pacific Coast Highway. That's where my office is located. You know, I, I look at this from two sides. The first side is I'm a land developer. I've been involved in land development for some time throughout my life. And I believe that if a person owns a piece of property, they have a right to a viable economic use of the property. And I also believe that if the, the city or the state or the county owns a piece of property, they also, the public has a right to use that property. And having said that, it means that they have the right to know where that beach is located. After all, they obtained the beach somehow, either it was part of the subdivision or they acquired it, but somehow it's owned by the public, and the public has a right to know where it is and to use it. They also have the right to develop it in a manner that is safe, meaning the stairs should be brought up to code. Now I'm gonna put the hat on in terms, and look at it from the perspective of the neighbors. When you open up a public beach, you should also have public facilities, meaning a restroom facility, a trash container. I believe that there should be a gate, it should be opened at dawn and closed at dusk. There should be signs that say it's inappropriate to drink on this beach, you cannot smoke on this beach, you cannot use the beach as a urinal or a toilet. So having said that, I think those are the things that, if I were in your position, I would consider in whatever conditions you apply. I think that the, the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority is a good organization, and it's an appropriate organization to manage this beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Any other public comment that I might have missed? Okay.
Yeah.
And Jessica, you've got about a little over 12 minutes for rebuttal.
I would first like to address the issue with the signage. Just like at any of, all of our accessways that we manage, we do have signs that dictate the rules that, how the public should use the beach, and some of those rules include keeping, actually, dogs are prohibited, and we state that on our rule sign, and we also state that there are no alcohols allowed. And also, we add a rule to let the visitors know to respect the adjacent properties. And those are just some of the rules that I can remember off, offhand, but we do have a number of rules that we try to enforce. And we do have MRCA rangers that patrol and regulate our beach accessways and beach sites. And the staff report mentions that we have to put in trash receptacles, and we are already planning to do that as part of our management of the site, and so we will have trash receptacles for visitors to use. And again, we will have rules, signs stating the rules that MRCA rangers will enforce. And we will also include signage warning the visitors about high tides and beach conditions. And the other thing that I would like to address is that this project is in no way a remodel of the existing stairway, and the funding that Mr. Schoenberg refers to is funding that was provided as a special condition of CDP number 584791A2, which was approved and issued by the California Coastal Commission in August 2015. This project fulfills this, the special condition of this permit because it provides new public beach access improvements at the site. And Special Condition 3 of CDP 584791A2 requires, quote, "that the funds be used to construct new public beach access improvements at 20516 Pacific Coast Highway in the city of Malibu." And this project, again, fulfills that condition exactly, because we are building new public beach access improvements at the site. And in response to Mr. Schoenberg's issue with the address, which we have correspondence on this that have been provided to you over the past few days, we have no preference for the address of the site, so we're, we're not opposed to changing the address to respond to Mr. Scho, Schoenberg's concern about people showing up at his property. And regarding the removal of the, the fence, or making the fence along the frontage of the property removable, we would have to defer our neighbors to talk to California State Parks about that issue, because this property is owned by State Parks currently, and any discussion about using the beach other than for public use or public access should be discussed with the property owner, which is State Parks. So, thank you. And again, I'm here for questions, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Jessica. That'll close our public comments. I'll open it up for staff discuss, yeah, questions and staff discussion.
You wanted a four-foot fence instead of a six-foot fence.
Yes.
And we, we got burned on that one on Malibu Road, so I think that's kind of a dead issue, but is this, is this fence the same type as Malibu Road? It looks like it's wood or something? Because you're talking about visual permeability, and it looks like it's a lot denser than chain link.
This one is going to be vertical bars, and it's not going to be made of wood, and I hesitate to say what the material is. It's not, it's not iron, but I, I think it's probably steel, but it's fabricated, fabricated and some, somehow fabricated. But yes, it, it will be visually permeable, and it's different from the design at Malibu Road.
Okay. And you say you have standard signs that say no, no dogs, no campfires, no drinking, this, this is...
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. What are the hours?
The hours, I believe, the staff report recommends that we open the beach from sunrise to sunset, and we're not opposed to those hours of operation.
So you have a ranger come by and lock it and unlock it?
We do have designs for locks that we've considered, and we've actually used at our other sites, that will lock and automatically unlock and automatically lock at a certain time, whichever time we set it to.
Okay, thank you.
How have those been working so far?
I hear the, the one at Malibu Road, some neighbors would say that there have been issues with it, but the one that we use at our existing Escondido Beach Access Way, I believe that one is working just fine.
And if there are issues, how, what's the plan to address them, if we see something similar to Malibu Road for this site?
We do have rangers that, again, regularly patrol these sites, and on our signage, we do include a ranger service number. It's kind of a hotline where people can call in and let us know if there are any issues. And in times of emergency, we would recommend that they call 911, but if there are any information or inquiries or questions, such as the gate not working, there's a ranger service number that the neighbors can call.
So you'll be getting a lot of calls from Randall and Mary Lou, I assume, with anything going on? It's, yeah, I'm just, I'm just calling it out, and, and that would be like a 24/7 type access?
Yes, it's a 24/7 ranger service line that people can call in.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, ma'am.
Please, yes.
This ranger, and, and I've heard, I, I don't live on the beach, but I've heard a lot about, from people who do. I mean, what kind of a schedule do your rangers have in terms of visiting the property without getting calls from people? Is it, do they visit it daily? Do they visit it weekly? Any idea?
Since I don't work in the ranger division, I don't have much communication with the rangers myself, but with the rangers that I have come in contact with, I do know that there is at least one or two rangers that weekly come stop by the beach accessways to empty the trash cans and put in new trash bags for the trash cans on a weekly basis. And while they do that, they also check if there's anything wrong with the accessways, and we are very diligent about fixing anything that needs to be fixed, such as, for example, the Malibu Road lock, for example. We actually had an inquiry lately about the, the lock, always locking, and so we've actually sent rangers out on, on the day that I have received the message, on the same day, to try to fix whatever the issue was out there. And additionally, when we opened up the accessway along Carbon Beach, we also had a ranger that was also patrolling at night, just to make sure that that lock was also locked after sunrise, like it was supposed to, and so that ranger was out at 7:00 PM, and also, they checked it again at 9:00 PM on a different day. And so our rangers are very diligent about doing the best they can to patrol these beach accessways.
How are you gonna promote this to the, to the public? How do you let people know?
Like, one of the comments earlier, we do have a mobile app that people can download to find out where these beach accessways are located.
Okay, when this thing gets done, will you do more promotion of that?
I don't, I'm not aware of any promotional events coming up for the app specifically, but the app has been promoted in the past.
Because I'm, I drove by, and I'm just wondering, if, if people could, once this thing gets built up, and, you know, where's they gonna park? I mean, I drove, I drove by this, and again, I just sort of drove by, and they can't park on either side of the thing, because you're in front of buildings with, okay? And there were three or four cars sitting in front of this thing, and early in the morning, and I assumed nobody was at the beach. So when people come, where do they park?
Right now, there's existing parking, parallel parking along the shoulder, along the frontage of the property.
Right.
And that would be where people would park is along the shoulder parallel to the highway and to the site itself.
On both sides of the highway?
I'm not going to say on both sides of the highway, because I think the, the landward side might be a little difficult to park, and I don't think there is actually space.
I was gonna say, I mean, I'm, it's just, it seems we're doing like half the job, right? I mean, you're gonna open the thing up, and I, I'm all for beach access, let people come, but they've gotta have someplace to park when they get there. And I'm just wondering, I mean, there's, there's space on the landward side, but I'll tell you what, if we're asking people to park there, I mean, we've, it's sort of like, we gotta be mad at these tourists, because we're trying to pick 'em off one at a time coming across the highway.
Right, no, we're not recommending that people park on the landward side, but again, there is currently existing parking that is available parallel to the site and parallel to the highway.
You can put about, I think, six, I, I just did six cars or something you can put in there, maybe, if you're lucky.
Right. And we do acknowledge that public beach parking is a hot topic in Malibu, and it's a, it's a ongoing discussion with the city when we have issues about public parking, so...
Yeah, just my, anyway, look, just my only suggestion was, you're sort of doing, at least my perspective, half the job, right? And I opened it up, but I gotta somehow figure out how to let people get access to it, and that, at least in my mind's questionable, but...
Right. And it's also been noted that this site, right now, has existing public access, and the public, for better or worse, do know about this, this site being open to the public. And right now, it, it technically is open 24/7, because the gate that's there now is a chain link gate. It does not have any sort of a lock on it, and so people are able to access it 24/7 as of this moment.
Question?
Let me ask you a question about the public health issue. This is a problem not only for this beach, but everywhere up and down the coast, where public access interfaces with private beach houses. Problem of people relieving themselves underneath the decks or on the decks in some cases. And does MRCA or the Parks Department have a, have you developed a policy for how you're gonna try to address the public health issue, or is it just sort of, no?
Again, it really is the resources that our rangers have on hand, and whenever they are out there patrolling, it definitely is something that they are on the lookout for, and they do their best to cite people and enforce the rules that we have, and which part of the rules is to respect adjacent property. And our jurisdiction is where we are allowed to operate and manage, which is any public land that the MRCA owns, or any public lands that the MRCA has. public lands that the MRCA has an agreement with, for example, with State Parks, to manage State Parks land and things like that.
So is that, whatever the rangers see, they can cite, but that's pretty much it? You don't have any, any program to evaluate future installation of, of, or future use of resources to develop septic systems for these areas? And, you know, some of the larger beaches do have them, and it's these pocket beaches which are mainly the, the, the public health problem.
Yes, and we do acknowledge that public porta potties and septic tanks are in high demand for public beach access sites. However, the Malibu Municipal Code, and the zoning code, and also the LCP, has very, very strict restrictions on using porta potties and things like that. But the MRCA is negotiating and discussing with the city planning department and other departments to try to work out a solution that will let us increase use of porta potties or other methods for people to use at our sites.
So the city has rules to say you can't put, that's stopping them from putting porta potties or, or something on the beach to deal with? That's a city rule?
Well, placement of a structure would have to meet any of the, the city's regular rules. I'm not aware of what would be in the way of a porta potty in this location other than, you know, some of the scenic and visual types of findings and setbacks. I don't know, there's not a lot of land here. I mean, we'd probably be talking about it up by the shoulder, and so those kind of constraints would probably be an issue. The city has been in conversations with MRCA about the winding way trails that go back to the Escondido Falls, and in that particular case, we have been talking with them about the possibility of installation of porta potties there, because there have been some similar issues on those trails. And I, we haven't found any impediments to that so far, so I think that's going to be workable.
So if we go back, it's not the city that's really preventing it from happening?
It may be a resource issue.
Yeah, thought on your side.
But in this, in this location, there's some significant constraints in terms of where you might place certain things.
A couple of other ones that came up for me is the, the, the public access for the funds, that's come up a couple of times. It seems like there's a little back and forth. Does this project qualify for the use of those funds as it was defined?
Yes, she read it.
I just wondered.
Richard?
That's really to Richard, yeah, just in terms of...
The funding of the project really isn't a city or zoning issue at all. It's, it sounds like the, the project originated out of a coastal development permit condition that the Coastal Commission established, so we don't have any say over any of the funding.
It's, it's not city funds.
Okay. And then next was just that, that, in the, there was one picture showing a little park that had been referred to. Whose land is that on? Is there, is that just part of the city or the MRCA's land as well?
Well, kind of under the tree, that area?
Yeah.
That's just part of the upland portion of this overall site. That's part of, owned by, part of what is owned by the State Parks.
Okay. And then there's parking relatively close at Moon Shadows. Is there any with this, you know, there's no rights to park there, I assume, correct?
Right.
Okay. And then last, just if, if we as commissioners did not approve this, what would the process, what would that look like, you know, in terms of how things would proceed from there?
Well, the, the commission has approved this in the past, as you recall, in December. It was the exact same project, just with a different configuration for the stairs, so it doesn't mean you have to approve it this time, but you have in the past. So if it weren't approved this time, the applicant would be free to reapply if, as long as it were, you know, not denied with prejudice. But it does meet all the rules, so there would have to be a, a reason to not approve it.
You would need to make findings for the denial. It could also be appealed to the city council.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Thanks. Go ahead, John.
Richard, do we have anything in the resolution as far as hours go? And while you're looking that up, I wanted to comment about how porta potties become boats when the tide comes up.
So it's Condition Number 42 that states the access shall be open daily from sunrise to sunset unless a public health and safety hazard is present. So it's Number 42 in your resolution.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question. I've gotten, I'm a little bit confused between the, the various beach openings that we've dealt with recently. One question has to do with, it seems to me that we spent a good deal of time worrying about tying the fence to the property corner so that people couldn't walk around it, but maybe that was in a different, maybe that was a different project. I can't, I can't really distinguish that. Does that ring a bell on this one or not?
You are correct, Commissioner Jennings. In the case of this project, the fence will go from property line to property line. What, what will happen is at the western end, there is a relatively high fence. It's close to six feet. I didn't, I didn't measure it. I'm, I'm sure the neighbors here could say the exact height of that fence. When you work your way over to the eastern property line, there is, for lack of a better term, a split rail property line fence, and that fence is perhaps three feet in height. And so what a previous commissioner, Commissioner Brotman, had brought up was that someone could go onto the property to the east and jump over that rail to access the site, despite the applicant installing a six-foot-high fence. The issue there is you'd be jumping over a three-foot-high fence, and the ground immediately slopes away from that. That's a raised property at that point, it's not on grade. But that particular fence is not on this project, and the applicant would, to prevent that situation, would need to install a fence that's in excess of our height allowable, height requirement, she, allowable height requirement. She would need a variance for actually a taller fence.
Okay, well, I assume that, that whatever we decided last time has been included in, in the conditions for this project, whatever we imposed?
The, the proposed delineation of the fence meets the goal of what Commissioner Brotman was asking for.
All right. The other question is, with regard to the gate, it seems to me that we might be better off if we tried to standardize our approach to every one of these accessways in terms of the locks and locking gates and all of the rest of that stuff. I remember we went around with the one on, on Malibu Road or Broad Beach, whichever it was, where we, there were complaints about the automatic locking gate, and, and we, we came up with some language which we hope would address that problem. And it seems to me that we would be well-served if we sort of incorporated that same approach in this project as well.
You're talking about the, the Malibu Road lock?
Yeah, the one where... There was a considerable concern about the automatic feature of the automatic locking gates, that they, they were basically open all the time.
And it sounds like it's not consistent by what Jessica pointed out before, between the properties we have now, to your point.
We're, we're requiring it to be locked from sunrise to sunset. I don't know how we can tell them what brand of lock to buy.
Well, John, you remember, I think we, we put some language in the, the Malibu Road resolutions to the effect that was intended to try to ensure that the locks would in fact be functional. And I think we left it, we might have left it to staff to, to police that.
Right. And, and the, the city manager had reached an agreement with LA County Beaches and Harbors to be responsible for the daily locking and unlocking of that, and I think we may not have put anything more specific in that resolution.
If, if we don't have the language, we could bring it back, we could have that language checked and brought back with a resolution matching that language, if you prefer also.
And I'd also like to add, if I may, commissioners, we did add Condition Number 43-2, which requires, I don't, the S should not be there, shouldn't be multiple visits, but it does require that upon when that gate is completed, staff is to verify that it is functioning correctly.
I think that might have been the language that we added. I think that's what it was, yeah.
Yeah, makes sense.
Richard, one quick question.
What was that, Bonnie?
Having it be multiple, to allow us to do site visits, plural, just to periodically check would be...
Okay. Richard, is there anything, you're talking about the, the fence on the east side being a little short and a little funky, and I assume that that's Mrs. Miller's property. Would she have to come to the city and have, to get that fixed fence to the standard of this fence?
She's not on that, she's not the court property, she's further in.
Oh, okay.
I'm just one house in from the end.
Okay, would the, would the adjacent neighbor, in order to keep it, keep people out of his property, would he have to, would they or he have to come to the city and, to fix that fence?
It should be processed with an over-the-counter application to install a property line fence, and that fence, I'm looking at a photograph of it, would be able to run on the property line, and it looks like their fence too is in line with the front of their home, and I don't see any utilities. So I believe it would just be an over-the-counter application.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation with the S added on site visits.
It is there.
It is there? Okay. And was there any other thing that staff wanted to correct?
No, we didn't have any additional comments.
That's my motion.
I'll serve.
Great, can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Uring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I have a motion for adjournment?
I move we adjourn.
Second. Meeting's adjourned.